Good evening and welcome to the February 1st, 2022, meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Kate Potter and I call this meeting to order at 6:36 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, and signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Our first agenda item is community comments, and before I read the community comment preamble, can you let me know, please, if you are here to make a community comment? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. Then seeing none, we will move ahead to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everybody. Tonight, as you can see on the agenda, we have quite a bit of information on our financial updates and our FY '23 budget report. So, as usual, as you can imagine, I do want to give you an update on what's happening in the district with our COVID-19 protocols, and a number of changes that continue to happen, some of it on a positive note as we move forward, in following recommendations from our Boards of Health and Health and Hygiene Advisory, DESI guidelines, so we are continually reviewing these. I also want to say that this evening, I am joined by Dr. Lexie Boudreau, Dr. Kate Peterson. I think Doctors Matt Vitale and Dr. Matt Beavers may also at some point join, and I again want to thank them. Every Tuesday, we meet for well over an hour discussing, again, the latest data, information on trying to move our district back to normal, all the while making sure that we keep our communities safe. So, our next slide, thank you, Beth. So, I always update you on your vaccination rates, and I do want you to know a topic of our conversation today, because it really is critical when we look at the Omicron variant, and again, looking at information on those members that are eligible to get their booster shots, it certainly makes a difference on the, you know, the symptoms that somebody is experiencing, they're proven to be much less. So, again, I want to tell you that we will have some information on boosters as it relates to our eligible students and all our staff members. So, we are going to, I'd like to tell you it's as easy as looking at a state database, it is not. So, we are going to have to reach out to our staff members to really cross-reference different databases. So, we again have 99% across all four schools with our staff, and our students that are what we considered fully vaccinated, and we continue to update this. So, at Chickering, you see us at 72%. If we include the staff overall, we have 77% in that school. Pine Hill with its students at 79%, including staff, 83%. Middle School, 86% students, 88% when you include staff, and our high school at 90% with our students, 91% when you include staff. This is important, and this is continually, when I say changing metric, those of you know that when we are talking about masking, the state right now does have a masking mandate across the board for all grade levels through February 28th at this point. That is the Monday after we turn, return from the February break. It does make a difference in our district, and I want you to again look at three of our schools at 83%, 88%, and 91%. As an effort, let me go to the next slide when I talk about this, no, I'm sorry, let me go back to that. So, when I talk about this metric, a couple of slides away, you'll hear me talk about that 80% attestation rate, which is the superintendent sending information to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, attesting to the fact that we have met that 80% threshold, and to get permission from the state to unmask our students with the permission of our, again, working with our school committees and our boards of health when it is safe to do so, really giving us the authority. We already have that for our high school, we've had that for a while. I think we were very hopeful to actually unmask sometime in December. I don't have to tell you what happened. Well, we'll talk about what happened the past couple of months. So, look at us, though. We're in such a place right now with the middle, with Pine Hill, and Chickering very close behind. And that's a testament to your families here that are doing everything they can to get their students vaccinated. And also, I will say, and I'm sure many of you have watched information coming out, that there is with Pfizer vaccine right on the horizon for six-month to five-year-old children. And we do have our preschoolers here in DS. Next slide, please. So, just a quick review here, we have a new program which our staff and students are opting into. We actually got the staff at-home testing kits last week, they were given out to over 300 staff members who opted in to do these at-home tests, and we're recommending they do not have to be, it is not mandated, but to recommend that before we return, for instance, on a Monday, that either Sunday night or early Monday morning, you take the test to make sure that, again, you are not positive with COVID. Our student kits came in today, so they are being distributed to every one of our schools, and they're each on off weeks. So, the families that have opted in at this point for the, this at-home testing program will receive a kit which contains two tests for each of their students in DS. Those are being given out as early as tomorrow in each of our schools across the district. We continue to have in-school symptomatic testing for our students and staff who develop symptoms during the school day. We are through next Monday finishing up our drive-through symptomatic testing program. And when I show you on a slide, you know, we were struggling to keep up back in January. Things have dramatically changed and are going in the right direction as far as those requiring this testing. So, this is still going on here, it is pre-registration, and again, it will end on February 4th. I can't say enough about the Community Mobile Clinic via AFC Urgent Care. The program was supposed to end on Sunday, of course, we had the blizzard, and we were unable to continue with the Sunday program, so we ended it on Thursday. I will give you some updates as far as how many members of your community accessed, again, another testing option. Thank you so much to this community partner. Next slide, please. So, this gives you an update as to where we have been. So, our own dot drive-through testing, 131 tests administered, 21 positive results, our mobile clinic, AFC, 446 tests administered, 88 positive results. If you look at the breakdown, and I was looking at it today with Assistant Superintendent McCoy and our nurse leader Jill Fedor, and we were looking at, for instance, from December 24th to February 1st, so as of today, at Chickering, 113 positive cases. And what I want you to make note of here is since the 15th midway through January, and I don't want to say we've only seen 33, but you can see from December 24th, what's that? I'll have to do the math quickly. But, you know, 80 cases. So, clearly, we're in a decline. Same thing with Pine Hill, only 25 cases since the 15th of January, middle school, 27 cases. Since the 15th, our high school, 31 cases, and the district zero since the 15th. If you look over to the side box, when I talk about that at-home testing option, we have right now 300 staff members and over 1,000 students who have opted into these take-home tests. I want to tell parents out there, and certainly staff members, it's not too late to do that. Please go on and access that form, it's very simple to opt in and just consent that if, in fact, you're doing the at-home test, that if there is a positive result, you know, you let your school nurse know. Next slide, please. So, this is a meeting I had this past Friday. We are considered one of the 80 percenters across the state. There probably are about 25, and I'm sure it's changing every day, districts that have completed the attestation form for one or more of its schools. There is a change, though, I want to bring to your attention. So, the DESI policy for unmasking for those students that reach the 80% vaccination rate, which right now you have at three of your school, and Chickering very close behind. So, if the school demonstrates the rate of 80% or more of all students and staff, then vaccinated individuals would no longer be required to wear masks. That came through on the 15th of October. We did fill out that attestation form, were approved in November, and we were moving towards that again in December. What changed was previously, we were told that if you had unvaccinated students or staff, they were required to remain masked, and we found that to be a little bit difficult. You know, we're doing everything we can, we don't want to be the masking or unmasking police. It doesn't set a good tone for the school, although, again, we talk about how important it is for us to remain as safe as possible, and to get our students back to what we would call "normal schooling" for so many reasons. So, what the new recommendation is, as of the 10th of January, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is strongly recommending if you are unvaccinated, you know, that you continue to wear your mask. And I would venture to tell you that when we do go through with this, whether people are vaccinated or not, or boosted, you will see some people that for a comfort level, students, staff, you know, choose to continue to mask. And that will be, again, up to them, an individual decision. And our school leadership teams will be working with, you know, our students and our staff. So, we're planning to review our vaccination rates at all schools, to plan unmasking when safe for the school community. As you say, I've just, as you've seen, I just shared with you that information. Next slide, please. So, this is the result, the next slide, of a lot of conversation today with our Health and Hygiene Advisory. And doctors, please reach out, because I know sooner hung up from you that we went to put this slide together, and I am going to pause after this slide, because your input is so important as we move towards unmasking our students. So, we are looking at tentatively scheduling March 7th pending DESI guidelines and approval. And what I say to you is right now, you have the authority for the high school, you already have that approval. So, as of the 28th, though, for other of our schools, and I still have to put the attestation forms in for right now, the middle school, and actually Pine Hill qualifies, and I will do that very quickly. But what we want to say here is we're waiting to see what the commissioner is going to do. It might be a moot point if on February 28th, he gives us the authority to unmask without even going through the attestation. I don't have that information yet. But we want to make parents prepared and families prepared, that as we move towards this date, we want to encourage you to vaccinate your eligible children, including booster shots as approved by the CDC and FDA, for those students, again, and staff that are eligible to receive the so-called booster. And I'm going to let the doctors talk about what the science, what the data is showing for those students that may contract, you know, COVID with the Omicron variant presently, and why it's so important to get the vaccinations and the boosters. For students and staff testing positive for COVID-19, they must isolate for five days, and they may return on day six and when their symptoms have subsided. That has not changed. What we are doing as a district, and you'll see an asterisk at the end of this next bullet, antigen or PCR testing, and I want you to know the antigen is our at-home testing that we're giving out to families, to staff, is still going to be required for all symptomatic individuals before returning to school. Now, DESI is not requiring that, and we are saying that, you know, if, in fact, you have symptoms, you have a fever, you have the sniffles, you know, you have something that you may or may not have kept a student home. So, what we're asking, again, is we have many tests available. We have opportunities to work with our nurses in each one of our schools. So, if families aren't sure, we want to make sure before your child comes, if there are symptoms, that we just make sure it's safe to return to school to do that. So, one thing that was clear in our meeting today, our Health and Advisory and our Boards of Health will continue to monitor data. So, today is February 1st, we're talking about looking at March 7th, and we're purposefully looking at that date, and it isn't moving the goalposts, so to say. But we do know on February 28th, we return from our break. We know that what happens after breaks, you know, there again is a lot of socialization. You know, kids are out vacationing, you know, ski trips, all those wonderful things, hockey tournaments, all the things we want our kids to do. And we know that there is unmasking involved, and we know that there is some level of risk. And that is something, again, that we continue to say, we talk about a benefit-risk analysis, the benefit of unmasking and the risk that may be associated with that. So, we want to be able to continue to look for the next three weeks or so. The data is declining steadily, those are really good signs for us, and we are ready, again, to start to take that next step forward of unmasking. We do know, though, that we have some students and staff that would be considered at risk. You may have somebody going through cancer treatment, you know, somebody with family members, students that are immunocompromised. So, we want to make sure that we, as a district, will work with those students, staff, families, to make sure that we have high-quality masks, you know, for those students and staff members. And our at-home testing program and in-school symptomatic testing will continue. So, I'm going to stop there and invite the doctors here to share some additional information before I finish up this presentation. Doctors?
Well, I'm curious about the silence from my colleagues who typically aren't silent, and so I will be the first to go. You know, it is a really hard decision to say when we start to pivot. Omicron has changed what, I should say, SARS-CoV-2, right, I'm not even calling it, calling the variant name versus its real name, but COVID has changed as a disease over the last two years, and what was considered a highly disease that carried a lot of danger with vaccination, particularly with boosting, has really changed the equation. In terms of what it has meant for pediatric disease, it is a very different disease than it is in adults, right? We'll say this past fall, over 800,000 adult deaths compared to 800 pediatric deaths, right? Magnitudes of difference. Having said that, children aren't meant to die, and 800 deaths can never be taken lightly when you consider a bad flu is 200, or season is about 200 a year. Having said that, given where we're headed, and the fact that at some point, we all have to learn to live with Omicron the way we live with flu, with RSV, trying to balance those risk and ratios and where we are, it seems like it is a good time to start planning for de-masking, what that might look like. It's not so much that the science has changed, it's more that the risks-to-benefit ratios seem to be pivoting. And how do we get our students and staff ready for this? And I think that was really the conversation that we've been having. I don't know, Matt or Kate, what else you want to add?
Hey, you're muted, I think you're talking, go ahead.
I would echo everything that Alexi said. No, it's, it is still a serious disease in children, it's just so much rarer than in adults. And somebody, I was reading recently that it's the, something like the eighth most common cause of death in children, which, which makes it, I think that emphasizes how important it is, but, but that doesn't mean that we're not at a point where we have to learn to move ahead despite that. We have to, and we're, we can do more to protect children by increasing vaccination rates and booster rates. I think an important thing to think about right now is that those children who are eligible for boosters would be well-advised to get them now. I mean, they, anytime is a good time, but, but it would be great to get them now if, if a child is eligible, so that by the time unmasking happens, we have as many people vaccinated as possible. You know, people talk about the fact that Omicron is highly contagious and that the vaccine isn't as effective as it was against the Delta variant, but it's still quite effective. And it, and for people who are boosted, it's quite effective in reducing the transmission of infection, and it's extremely effective in reducing the severity of illness and the risk of hospitalization and death. But it, but it probably reduces the risk of transmitting the infection by 50% when people are fully vaccinated and boosted, if eligible.
I'll also say I have pretty little to add to that, I think, I think you both covered that really well. I think that's, you know, the one thing I do want to emphasize is I'm reminded a little bit of being in a similar meeting about a year ago, when we were talking about coming back to school at all, and just wanting to acknowledge now, like I acknowledged then, that this is going to be a scary change for some members of our community. And, and I think part of wanting to wait is wanting to see numbers come down, but part of wanting to wait is to, like, give everybody an opportunity to sort of process this and understand what it means to them and their family. Because we're going to move to a state where masks are optional, meaning that it's going to become more of an individual choice, and I think we all need some time to think about what that choice means for us, and we want to have an opportunity for people who might feel they're at higher risk to have those conversations. But I think, like I felt a year ago, I think that we're at a place where things have changed, just as, just as Kate and Alexi said. And, and so we're at a place where, while this change, you know, doesn't represent no change in risk, I'm not going to sit here and say that there isn't more risk of transmission with masks off, because there is. I think we're at a place where, where the risk calculus has changed, and it's acceptable, and a good step towards getting even closer back to, to normal, whatever, whatever that means.
I have one more thing to add, which is that the more ready availability of rapid tests that can be used at home has, has helped change the equation, too, because we, we're better able to diagnose infections quickly and isolate people who have them, and that's, that's a very effective tool. We couldn't even imagine that tool a year ago. Michael Mina could, but we couldn't.
Okay, so Madam Chair, that is my report for this evening. I'm sure there are lots of questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and thank you, as always, to the Health and Hygiene Advisory Committee for being willing to join us after you have worked your day jobs, and they're not easy ones, and then also meeting weekly, so we really appreciate your time. Judy, I think, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, and maybe I'm being an alarmist, but have, have, have the, the districts thought about the issue of unmasking and sort of the social aspect of it, and whether there's going to be any sort of, you know, peer pressure one way or the other, and, and how that will, will, you know, how, what will message in terms of that? Because, you know, I can see middle schoolers in particular, you know, that peer pressure thing at that age is a real, a real issue.
So, let me start. I know Principal John Smith is actually at our game in Medway. He and I just spoke a few minutes ago. Dr. Tiano, I know, is on the call. So, we had started to plan our meeting in early December to have these very discussions, and I know we had talked about it. So, I will be not only meeting with, it's all four principals, which is really kind of exciting right now also. So, we will start to talk, I know it's different for different ages, you know, Judy, you bring that up, and I think it's very clear that, you know, probably our middle school is a concern, but I know that both principals are aware. I, I know that we'll work with our students and our staff, so there's a respectful environment. I can report back to you, I know we've had conversations about the possibility of, you know, somebody in a particular class, and we might have to, you know, ask a class to mask or come up with other mitigation strategies to make sure people are feeling safe. I don't think there's going to be, and I know you know this, that one answer, you know, fits every situation that can happen, but I guarantee you, we will make this a priority. Come up with a slogan, come up with a way to be respectful, and, like I said, you know, work with our families and our students.
I bet the kids could come up with some good slogans themselves. Tracy?
Yes, thanks so much, Judy, for bringing that up. One of the other things I wanted to talk about was, well, thank you, Kathleen, for, for giving us all that information. There was a case that was brought to my attention where a student was asked in the, in the front of the room if she was vaccinated or not, and it led to some bullying afterwards, it was a very serious situation. People were very upset by it. I just want to make sure that there will be, kind of along with what Judy is saying, no public questions as to whether or not a person is vaccinated. I think, Judy, this is somewhat along the lines of what you were asking, it was a very concerning situation. The child stayed out of school for a couple of days, I guess, because she was so bullied over this situation, it was extremely upsetting to me. So, that's number one. Number two, I was concerned about, and a lot of the parents were concerned about, teachers and staff that may have lost their jobs over being not vaccinated. Fourth, I don't know how many there were, I'd like to know how many there were. I know of at least one, and a lot of people called me about it. They were very upset about this young person losing her job. Can we hire those people back? Can we actively try to get them back here? How many were there, and can we get them back? Because a lot of people thought it was unfair that they were, they lost their jobs because they weren't vaccinated, they made a choice not to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. So, again, we will certainly work to make sure, and I think, let me stop by answering as far as vaccinated or not, I think the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did a favor to all of us, and one thing that they did was, we can recommend, again, people have to make their own determination about their safety, but I guess I have to be very honest, that looking at the data and the science, that if somebody chooses to unmask that is not vaccinated, that might provide more of a risk to the person sitting next to them. But those are decisions that people are going to have to make. So, at this point here, what DESI has said, we're not going to be the masking/unmasking police. So, again, if somebody is not vaccinated, they choose not to, to mask, that is their decision at this point. And I believe we have such strong vaccination rates, and I can't, I keep saying this to people when I have conversations, I've learned so much, but there's so much I don't know, I do the best I can. But as far as there is not a zero risk in any place we go, I don't care if it's the supermarket, you know, certainly in schools, we're spending a lot of time together. So, I think people just have to understand that, and we can work together the best we can. As far as, and again, I'm going to be as transparent as I can, I cannot give you a number. The number is so small, it would clearly identify the person, and that I'm not willing to do. As far as somebody who, again, was a member who was not part of our permanent staff, but was contracted to do some work in the district, and that is correct. But there is something that we would have to take a look at. So, I can't answer that question, that's a really good question at this point. But right now, you do still have a vaccine mandate for your staff. So, that is something that the school committee has put forward. If you choose to go in a different direction, you would have to do that. But right now, for staff, any staff we hire, we continue to hire staff that is vaccinated. And just want to remind everybody, vaccination, even though you heard your doctor speak this evening about how important it is for the booster for all of us, and we're going to try to get those rates for you, fully vaccinated for us in a hiring process, is two doses of Pfizer, Moderna, or one of J&amp;J. So, I hear what you're saying, and I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, who voted on the, the vaccine mandate for the staff? Because I think that was on our agenda, and we didn't vote on it. I'm not sure if there was a state law, I have no idea, to be honest, if anybody knows, thank you.
I believe we followed the recommendation of the Boards of Health who voted on it, and we, I, you know what, if there was an official vote, I honestly can't remember, but I do know that that was my recommendation after working with the Boards of Health and their recommendation. Recommendation to mandate that for our staff.
I can speak on behalf of the Sherburne Board of Health. We voted to mandate that vaccine.
In Dover, we met, we did the same.
Okay, thank you.
I see a hand up. From iPhone. But I can't tell if you're a school committee member or not.
I'm a parent.
Okay, at this point, I'm sorry, we're only taking. Discussion from school committee members. But you're welcome to email us with your questions. Thank you.
We will also, just to let parents know. We will also start to put together frequently asked questions and communicate. When I sit again with the principals, we'll come up with a list of things that we can obviously share with our. Community. If parents have questions, please make sure they email us, and we'll try to answer them on our website, where we continue to put. COVID information up with frequently asked questions. That are answered through Desi, and we will also do them for the district if this is the direction we're going in.
Thank you. That will be very helpful. Are there any other questions or comments from school committee? Oh, I see Maggie.
Hi, I'm I'm just wondering if sometime between now and if March March seventh is the target date, will we have an opportunity for another sort of Zoom forum, maybe for? The schools that would be impacted for, you know, looking at the, you know, the parent that has questions. You know, I like all the push out frequently asked questions, but maybe one opportunity for folks to come. And ask things live if possible. I I realize people are pretty flat out, so what might be?
I I think that's a great suggestion, Maggie. We obviously did that, I believe, in January. When we came back, we had a parent forum. I I know we had it in the morning that day, but we were. We had we had a time crunch in trying to have a forum with both our. Parents and then our staff members before a meeting. So I think we would do it in a similar manner, make sure that there is opportunity to answer questions and give parents a forum to. And obviously, before we would roll this out. So we do have a few weeks. I know we have a school break in there. So time is of the essence. But thank you so much. Great suggestion.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Not seeing any. Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll go to our business administrator, Don Fattori, who has lots of information to share with us this evening.
Thank you, Kathy. So I think next on the agenda is your warrant report. So in your packet is the monthly. Report where we just highlight the warrants that Judy's so graciously been coming in and signing. We're actually up to date, so. It's not too many times that I can say that. So thank you, Judy. Again, if you ever have any questions about any of the warrants, just let us know. Because all the details here, and we're more than welcome to come by and take a look. Moving on to your monthly report. So we have an odd date, January six twenty six, but that was in order for me to be able to get the packet out to you on Friday. And again, I'm including in your packet in bold any new information. I do have one piece of new information for revenues, though, that just happened as of yesterday. So they finally posted the first payment of our. Chapter seventy one, our regional transportation reimbursement. So it's coming in at about eighty percent reimbursement. So we're going to potentially be seeing. About a hundred thousand dollars over what was on the cherry sheet. And so there will be a positive revenue variance on. Your financial statements the next time you see it that will reflect that, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the budget too, because that will. Come into play for the fiscal year twenty three budget. So that was great news. To see that it was reimbursed at a a rate of eighty percent, and that doesn't mean that we won't see a little bit more come. June, because basically they they disperse everything that's in that transportation funds. And so that will just depend on everyone's expenses for the year. On salaries, I just wanted to. Point out that we are having several long term leaves. For various reasons, but that is causing a negative variance already in your substitute line item. And that's because when a long term leaves come into play, we do encumber the period of time they're going to be with us. So that is accumulating. Quite quickly in that account, and I also just wanted to highlight because this actually. Answers one of the questions that we received about the fiscal year twenty three budget. We did increase our substitute rates in fiscal year twenty two by twenty percent. So the increase that you're seeing in the fiscal twenty three budget is that we're taking that into account, because we did the increase. Post budget last year, but in a way to try to entice substitutes this year. So we, you know, we were sure we would see a negative. Variance from that, but it's making us feel more comfortable that we need that increase in the budget for next year to accommodate. You know, potential just regular substitutes. On the expenditures, we did finally do a. Projections for utilities, but I will say, knowing that what the last two years have looked like. I'm not so sure how valid our projections will hold up, because, you know, our our years have not been. Consistent, but we did do our our best. So it's in there, but know just that it could fluctuate as we continue through the winter season. And in the spring. And then the good news about fiscal year twenty one, because we're still straddling a couple of years here, is we finally did get our E and D certified. So I I attached the copy of the letter from the D O R for you to see. And and with that certification, we are now able. To officially turn back about the six hundred thousand dollars that we had projected. To the towns, and so they've already received notification. And their February assessment payment will be reduced by their portion of that term. So that was great news. Any questions on the? January twenty sixth financial report? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And sorry, are you up again? Are we on to?
I think Kathy will do the next.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I I again want to report that in November, the A C E D committee met to review requests. We are recommending the following additions. With a zero cost is the change in the name of a student club capay to A S U, the Asian Student Union, and that was approved. We added a knitting club at a one point O ratio. Fifteen eleven thirty three is the stipend cost for that position. Again, that was approved. And last was moving ten volunteer coaches to ten assistant coaching positions. That would be, again, in the budget. That's thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars and sixty cents. Again, that was approved. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And this is also reflected in the budget that you'll review this evening.
Maggie?
Um, I feel like, did we look at ASID requests already one time this year? Yeah. And so is this the, is this in addition to that, or is this what came back to the table after our last conversation? Is that? Because I think some things are missing, and some things are still there, right?
I don't think anything is missing as it relates to the region. There were some others that were part of the Dover and Sherburne budgets.
Okay. That's what I'm just trying to like clarify my memory, because I don't trust it all the time, but I got you. Um, I just want to say thank you. For moving the volunteer coaches to the assistant coaching positions, and I I think for anyone who's on this call who. Is concerned about why we'd be adding such a large item to our budget, I think it's really important. For the community to know that anyone who's played a sport in any of those ten. Sports, the way those coaches have been paid historically is by, you know, asking after families have paid their electric. Their athletic fee. You know, to be voluntold that, you know, we're going to make a donation, or we're going to sell five hundred and fifty thousand candy bars or whatever, and the kids are very clearly, it's communicated to them that their coaches can't be paid without this. Donation. And so I think that it's really important in our commitment to equity. And, you know, making sure that every student who wants to participate in a sport. Doesn't like awkwardly find out that, in fact, there's like a secret fee that they didn't even know about. I just think that that's been one of our sort of. You know, sort of. You know, little. Unknown facts for the outer, like the larger community, and it's really important that we are addressing this at this time. So thank you for taking that on.
So we did present these in November or December, remember, and because we were, it wasn't going to impact. The budget at that point, and we were going back and looking at the associated increase in the athletic fee because of that decision. That's why we went back together tonight. So not not Groundhog Day yet.
Thank you. Lynn?
And are we being asked to vote on a on the name change?
Yes, because it's in appendix D in the contract.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Okay, thank you for this work. So we need to vote on this. So I would like to invite a motion. To accept the A C E D recommendations for fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Lynn Collins, second.
Okay, Maggie and Lynn, thank you. Further discussion? Okay. Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you. Next is the athletic fee.
Right. So following following our discussion about the adding the thirty thousand dollars to the operating budget. We are then asking the school committee to put a. To approve an increase in the athletic fee. The three, the thirty five dollar increase would basically cover a hundred percent of the added. Stipends that we're adding to the general fund. I gave you a little bit of information about where we stand in comparisons to other T B L districts, some of the caveats that are. Different in how we operate and how other T B L districts also or leagues also operate. The. We I talked to Emily Sullivan, we talked about this, and what we agreed to do too is to sort of make it less of a hardship on. Families who have multiple children in the high school at the same time. We lowered the family cap to four paid seasons versus five, so that your current family cap right now is fifteen hundred. Which is, you know, pay for five students, and after that, or five seasons, and then after that, it's waived. We felt it made sense to lower the cap to four paid seasons, and the new family cap then would be one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. So we felt that that was actually a good compromise all the way around for that piece, but the projected revenue then would be the twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. After that goes into effect for next year. And again, this would eliminate. Any fundraising for. Coaching, and I know some teams, not all teams, also participate in the use of the huddle, which is the filming and. Viewing presentation. We've already absorbed that into the general fund. So families were not asked this year to cover that. Families, though, as you can see in your monthly. Packages have been still continuing to contribute the funds for the assistant coaches. So that was what we will completely eliminate with this move.
Thank you, Don. Lynn, I don't know if you have a new question or if your hand is still up.
Yep. So I noticed that in in the memo, it says we don't directly collect any gate. Receipts. And why? Why did we? Did we consider that as an offsetting measure as well?
Yeah, so if in the past, though, where the gate receipts have been collected is with the boosters. So if you remember as a parent, you would be asked to buy the season pass. So that was a fundraiser for the boosters. Emily and I and and John will talk about if we want to go into a different direction with gate receipts. I think boosters has sort of moved on from that a little bit, and it's handled in a couple of different ways. Right now, so that's definitely on our list to regroup on that. See if there's a way that we could. Start taking that in within the district. It would go into your athletic revolving fund. And would be available to offset some of the expenses, so that is a possibility. And if that came to fruition and we were getting enough money to. Offset some of these costs, then we could come back and reduce the athletic fee. But as of now, if we're not changing, barring any changes, we're requesting this increase to cover what we've agreed to do so far. Because it may be a little bit of a larger project to look at. Gate receipts. Because we we've never established that here as firmly as some other districts have.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I do have one. And it it goes to a little bit of what Maggie was talking about before, and we've discussed this, so I I don't want to belabor it, but. I'm also on the Athletic Advisory, and I realize John Smith's not able to join us, and I don't think that Emily Sullivan is on the call, but. I do want to be mindful of. If there's a way to set some kind of guidelines for for parents or or captains' parents who, I think. Have a tremendous. It's a big job, I've heard. Because I'm I'm thrilled that the coaches will be covered, but things like the banquet or. The special jersey or, you know, that kind of thing, and and I'm not saying those things aren't aren't worthwhile. But if there could be some, and I don't know, I don't have a suggestion, but to be mindful that that's still out there, and that that's still a place where families might be asked. For more. And it's something I'll continue to raise at at Athletic Advisory, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, and I think what's with approving both of these motions tonight gives Emily and John the charge to go back and have more direct conversations. With the team captains and the coaches themselves, right? Because the coaches sometimes. Play into this, and really, I think what we've talked a lot about by taking this pressure off is to have more community building, fundraising. Team events where we're not asking like car washes. You know, those fun things and really putting more. Direction and restrictions around what happens. And so there there is the student handbook that has some protocols around that that we probably just need to get back it to really enforcing. You know, the cost of banquet, how long banquets are, things like that are documented. And so I think this gives them a a springboard to go and sort of start fresh and work through some of these things and really keep an eye on on what's happening during this transitional year next year. Because I think that can set a new change in the culture of of athletics here.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I I know it's on their minds, and I just wanted to raise it tonight.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussions about that, so I I know that Emily will be really happy. With this decisions, if you approve the rate change in addition to the coaches, because it does give her a new landscape to go work with. Yeah, the other teams with.
Okay. Um, any further discussion or questions before we vote? No? Okay. Then I would like to invite a motion. To accept the increase in the high school athletic fee. For the school year. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three?
Judy Miller, so moved.
Did I say that right, Don?
Well, it's just going to be affected July. It'll be affected for the ongoing, not just the school year, but for the. For the future. So I was just, if you do approve a per season athletic fee of three hundred and thirty five dollars with a family cap. Of one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, effective July first, twenty twenty two.
Let me try that again. I would like to invite a motion. To accept the fee of three hundred and thirty five dollars for the athletic fee. The family cap of one thousand, three hundred and forty, beginning July first, twenty twenty two.
Judy Miller, so moved.
All in second.
Judy, then Lynn, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Tracy?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Don, I think you're up again.
Yeah, exactly. So hopefully everyone, I, I had everything in the packet, so hopefully everyone has that in front of them. Because I'm just going to sort of walk through some of the key things. But as you know, this is our version two point O with the budget. When we presented this back in December, we basically said this was our first pass. You know, we have a lot of preliminary numbers, we're still working on some things. On top of that, you saw the great presentation at the joint meeting on January eighteenth, talking about, uh, special student services and special education, which I think hopefully shed a little more light about on some of the ask that we were putting into the fiscal year twenty-three budget and put it in perspective from a K-12 and not just the region so that you could see that there is a plan, um, you know, to educate, uh, our students here, K through twelve and, and some of our special educating, education programs. So what I'd like to do tonight is walk through some of the new information that we have obtained of how it impacts the budget. And I think luckily, there's a lot of red, and so with a lot of red means assessments are going down. So the town, uh, finance committee should hopefully be, uh, pleased with that. So we started the revenue, um, adjustment. So it shows in red, just so that you can understand the equation here. Because if we get more revenue from a source outside the towns, that's going to reduce the town's assessments. So that's, this whole schedule is sort of driven by what changes are going to be in the town assessments. Um, and so, you know, at first it seemed weird to say, okay, we're going to have an increase in revenue, yet I'm showing you red numbers. So that's the correlation. It's actually a reduction in their assessments, because we're having another way to, uh, fund our budget that's outside of taxpayer money. So on January twenty-sixth, the governor's first pass of the budget came out, and as we have historically done, well, since I think here we have used, uh, the governor's budget as our, uh, budget placeholder, because we will not get the final state budget before we finalize our budget. And we have historical analysis to show that using the governor's budget has always been a safe way to go. Um, and so chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one for fiscal year twenty-three are both showing increases over what we had put in the placeholder budget, which was the fiscal year twenty-two cherry sheet. So if you look at the numbers that I gave you for chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one in the first pass and, and, and subtract that from the numbers I showed you on the cherry sheet, which I included in the packet, that's where you're going to see those numbers that I have in the, in the, uh, column there, the one oh seven and the eighty-three thousand. In addition, you just approved the increase in the, um, student athletic fee. So we are showing that use of, um, additional revenues. So this, uh, version two point O is, uh, bringing into the revenue line item, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and four dollars of new revenue that will offset, um, members of stuff. Any questions on the revenue side? Oh, I do have one more thing to say, sorry. So you'll see a line item there that says utilize E and D to apply fiscal year twenty-two revenue surpluses to fiscal year twenty-three. Well, if you go back to the report, I told you from the January twenty-sixth, uh, report that I just got new information about our chapter seventy-one and that we're going to see a revenue surplus. When we come back the next time, I will show you, um, that we are going to probably take that revenue surplus and use E and D to offset fiscal year twenty-three budget. Because if I, if we had known what our revenue from chapter seventy-one was going to be in fiscal year twenty-two, that it was going to be this number, we would have assessed the towns that much less money. So we're going to give that back to them by taking it out of, you know, our surplus this year and putting it towards fiscal year twenty-three budget. So there will be at least one more revenue adjustment that we'll make before you vote your final budget in March. So that's actually another good piece of news. Okay, so moving on to the expenditure, we do have quite a few adjustments. So, um, version two is usually when we're able to take into account any salary reductions from retirements or known staffing changes. So your first line item is a eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. That represents, um, staffing changes that are happening, happening in a couple of categories. So, um, mainly administrations, so central office, stud administration, some of the building administrators, administration. We've definitely had some shifts in the administrative, the admin assistant, those positions. So, uh, knowing that we've had some long-serving staff here and some mid-year, uh, staffing changes, there's some, some additional salary savings that we can incorporate into your budget. In addition, I told you, um, that we had a placeholder that we knew was going to be coming forward in version two to upgrade our website and to upgrade our financial system. Um, and so that is an additional fifteen thousand dollars being added. That was added in all three districts, so it's a shared cost, um, and that's the region's portion. So this is where we're actually seeing quite a, you know, a reduction in our budget versus fiscal year, I mean, versus version one. And we're showing some salary reductions from educator retirements and staffing changes both in. So remember, I do this by function, because the twenty-three oh five is your regular ed, um, classification, and twenty-three ten is your special ed. So within those, um, two categories, we have approximately four staff members retiring. Um, and so the net impact of that plus one or two staffing changes is a little over two hundred thousand dollars in salary savings. On the flip side, um, we had almost included all of the new positions that were in the student services presentation at the joint meeting except for, um, an addition of one middle school special ed teacher due to the cohort that's coming up, uh, to the middle school. And so that, you're seeing the, um, impact of that, plus we're converting a position, the academic coordinator position in the bridge program, we are converting into an educator position. So those two positions net the conversion cost, because I've already, that FTE is already in the budget. I just have to pick up a little bit more, um, is the increase of ninety-one thousand. The next is we looked at our, our two, our, uh, special education grant funds, and we have enough capacity to put another, um, educational assistant into the grants. So the next line item is making that adjustment. And we did go back and look at the, um, placeholders that we had for some of the adjustment counselor positions and trim that back, uh, by fifteen thousand. So that's another reduction there. Um, as we talked about, um, at the joint meeting, we're looking to add a floating nurse, uh, to cover all three districts. So the increase, um, to the region's budget based on that, um, net the savings of the substitute budgets, because it is, it's our hope that with a floating nurse, we really won't necessarily have to hold a budget for, we used to budget for ten to twelve substitute days. So I did take the substitute budgets out when I added in the floating nurse, just to sort of, uh, limit the impact. Um, and then the approval of the assistant coaches that you just did in appendix C, um, is the next add. And then the one that we knew we were hoping was going to happen, uh, was our decrease in employee health insurance. Uh, the rates were approved on December thirteenth. If you remember, I built the projections on, um, a proposed rate increase of seven point five percent. Um, in the packet of information that was provided for you today, you can see the rates were not, um, seven point five percent. In fact, Harvard Pilgrim, which is one of our most populated or subscribe programs, was only a rate increase of three point five. And Blue Cross went, uh, down, it actually went down, uh, by seventeen point five percent. Um, and so I tried to give you a little more information about how that all played out, uh, with West Suburban Health Group. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that in just a second. So basically, we have reduced, um, the operating assessments, uh, by almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred and twenty thousand from, um, I'm sorry, that's too much, I write wrong number. It's about five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars from revenue and three hundred and forty-two thousand from expenditures. What that does to the, um, revenue assessments is that Dover's revenue assessment went down by about three hundred and thirty thousand, and Sherburne's went down by about two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So also included in your packet, um, were a couple of other pieces of information for you. We updated the summary so that you can see the categories of revenue. So, uh, you can clearly see the town's assessments and what their increase was over fiscal year twenty-two, along with chapter seventy, seventy-one, and the increase in the athletic fees. And then we did the categories and the expenditure, so they can just clearly see your payroll, um, benefits and other expenditures. Um, you've got the, you have the updated assessment calculation for those who'd like to get in the nitty-gritty with how that's calculated. In addition, we provided you with the tenure enrollment history and the five-year projections. The good thing on the projections, as you see, we're holding steady over the next five years. You really see very little fluctuation, um, in the total enrollment for the region. And the last piece that's in, uh, that was added to the packet today, it was just a more, um, uh, more defined summary of all the proposed positions that are now in both version one and version two of your budget so that you can clearly understand what the ask are, um, as far as new positions. Um, and then, like I said, um, the second page was really looking at our employee benefits and giving you a little more insight into, one, the rate increases, um, by provider, um, but also where our, uh, where our participants sit in those different categories, so you can sort of see the impact of the rate increases. And if you're, um, not as familiar with West Suburban Health Group, I know some of you, uh, you know, might work in towns that do West Suburban Health Group. With the elimination of Fallon, um, members of West Suburban Health Group, probably fifty percent of the participants in Fallon. So with Fallon going away and Blue Cross taking the place of the low-cost provider, Blue Cross, our, our existing Blue Cross plan, uh, rates, then, when you have so many people moving into that provider, we actually got a discount. Um, and so that was sort of a, um, sort of an unexpected, I think, uh, surprise in that it, for those communities that weren't so heavily in Fallon, it actually, it was, it was significantly, um, a savings for us. Because basically, if you look at our healthcare, we're not seeing an increase, um, between twenty-two and twenty-three because of these changes. And I know Judy and Maggie are probably closer to it, because of all the work that we did, um, with the negotiations on this. So, um, I think that's, makes us feel good. I think we still made the right decision that many years ago to stay with West Suburban and see this continue to play out, uh, because it is one of our largest operating expenses outside of payroll. Okay, so I threw a lot of information at you, and I talked really fast, but are there any specific questions that I can answer from the committee?
Thanks, Don. Tracy?
Yes, um, Don, sorry, it's probably because I'm new and I probably could have emailed this to you. But on, uh, page twenty-two, there is, and it's a very small amount, I'm not really worried about the amount, the amount, but, uh, school choice, sending tuition, and charter schools sending tuition, can you explain to me what that is?
Yeah, so we can have, so we don't accept school choice, um, into our, um, district. But we, just residents in Dover and Sherburne are allowed to school choice into other school districts. Um, and so when someone from our two towns go to another school district, we are assessed a school choice cost. So that's school choice. In addition, as you know, there's many charter schools within the state. Our stu-, our residents have the same rights to apply to those charter schools. If a resident or Dover and Sherburne goes to a charter school, the sending school district is assessed for that. So, um, they, they, charter schools are a little, are, are much more expensive for ascending, uh, for ascending district than a school choice. So in the first year, you have, this gets really complicated, but in the first year, you have a charter, uh, a resident going to a charter school, the state reimburses you a hundred percent of what they're charging you. So last year, we did have someone, and so you didn't see that the revenue or that revenue impact of it, because dollar for dollar, the state reimbursed us. The second year, you have that student going, they only reimburse you sixty percent. The third year, it's forty percent, and then after that, so they try to stabilize it for you. But that's what that is. Uh, but I, I will tell you, that has a tendency to change. In fact, it looks like our enrollments in those, um, types of schools did change, because we're starting to get credit back in our chapter seventy payments for some of that activity, uh, because they do take census twice during the school year and correct the, the charges to school districts. So right now, if you look at our cherry sheet, it's because we don't have anyone enrolled in a school choice or a charter school projected for fiscal year twenty-three, and that's why we have no assessments for those.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
So also, Tracy, uh, each year, and you may know this, that every school committee is required to decide if they want to part of school choice. So a neighboring town might choose to be where DS chooses not to be. So our residents have the opportunity to apply to that neighboring district that is a choice district.
Oh, excellent. Okay, thank you.
So this is where we stand right now. Um, you know, I think there's, we're working on a few other, um, uh, potential reductions and, uh, um, funding sources for some of these ask. And so it may be that we have some of these pulled together when we come back on February sixteen to present to the school committee prior, just prior to us having the joint meeting with, uh, warrant and, and advisory. Uh, but this is where we stand right now. I know for sure I'll be able to bring you back, uh, a use of E and D for the chapter seventy-one funding, um, increase, and so that will be a change. Uh, and then if there are, um, any other things that come to light over the next two weeks, then we will, uh, move with that too. Your next, um, forum meeting where we will, um, actually approve the budget will be March eighth. So you'll have your public budget hearing, you know, so we'll open up at the public budget hearing, we'll do the presentation, see if anyone in the community has any comments on the budget. Um, and then you'll go back into regular session and vote your final budget. That will then be certified by our treasurer and such the two towns following that. Um, and then the process is in their hands to continue, uh, with the approval process through their own open hearings, budget hearings, and then, uh, obviously the town meetings. So we are probably, you know, halfway there right now. I feel like we, some, some positive things fell our way with the retirements and, um, the governor's budget. So, um, if things are, are looking, I think, more in a reasonable, uh, financial position for both our towns.
Thanks, Don. Uh, Maggie, I see your hands up.
Um, I just, I want to, you know, say thank you to all the folks who put together this budget and to Don for everything that you, you do to explain it so well. Um, I, I guess my question is, what I see when I see, because the, the thing that gets my attention in this budget really is the increased staffing, right? Because that's where the money, that's where we spend the most money. I, I guess what I'm seeing in this budget ask pretty directly, um, connects to issues that may have cropped up more because of the pandemic, right? Like, you know, the academic specialists, the targeted, you know, work, you know, wanting to reduce class sizes because kids, you know, need more attention, obviously guidance support, um, the special education programs, particularly around adjustment counselors and, and influence. So, you know, on one hand, I'm wildly enthusiastic about supporting things that support our kids, not just during this time, but, you know, also just financially in terms of kids who might otherwise need to leave the school district, because their needs are more than we can meet them. So in that sense, I'm like extremely happy to support all these things. And I have a tiny bit of worry that we add these positions to our budget, and now we have them forever. And the needs of the pandemic kind of pushed down, but, you know, it's like, once somebody's in the family, you know, we're kind of not going to not have them in the family forever. And so I, I guess I just would love for someone to speak to that worry and, and how we're going to afford, like, um, avoid having bloated to our budget in the long haul.
So I'll, I'll, I'll add a little bit, that I, I think we've been very cautious about adding things to the budget that we think are COVID-related. So I don't necessarily see any of the ads that we're doing related to the pandemic. I think that some of the socially emotional learning, um, issues that we're addressing now were there before COVID. Um, and we just had to pause a little bit to get through COVID. But some of the programming that, you know, Kate shared with you was, was programming that we already had in place. Now, when we look at adding the counselor to the great program at the high school, if you remember, we added that program with existing staff. So we were able to create a program, not add any staff to that position. It is actually grown to, you know, take it into, into that population, eight to 12 students, and now really needs a dedicated counselor to really make that program function the way it should. And so that is not really related to COVID. That's related to a program that we had built and has grown and we need to better support it. Those are the types of students that would potentially be leaving us and going out of district. So that is definitely an investment worth our while. And that's what they're building then to replicating that at the middle school and a semi-program like that, that tickering as being sort of the house, housing that elementary school sort of doing that kind of programming where Pine Hills did a different kind of program. So these are like long, these are like thought-out processes that I don't see really necessarily a reaction to COVID. Same with the academic specialist at the middle school, that's a position that has been discussed. And I think that what it allowed us to do with COVID is that we had some extra funding to help relieve, adding that on post, you know, post-budget. So I think that's sort of what it allowed us to do was test it out. And we knew that if we felt comfortable with that position, it's something we wanted to incorporate into the general fund budget. So I think that if anything, the pandemic and the COVID gave us a little opportunity to pilot some of these positions. Definitely at the elementary school is that's what we did. We used that money to pilot things to make sure that's something we really wanted to build into the budget. I, I also will say that we don't just, if we don't need staff, I think through staff leaving, through retirements, we don't replace certain positions. So we never carry, I don't think, unnecessary staff. You'll see, if you look at some of the elementary budgets or even your budgets, we have at times, you know, let positions go. They don't ever feel that if we're adding something, it's, you're, you're taking it on for, you know, eternity.
Um, thank you. I, just out of curiosity, I know Sherburne uses a different health insurance company. Where are their rates this year?
I have to take a look at that. I'd be curious to, you know, they're in Maya, which is off Blue Cross. I haven't, had, haven't had time to deep dive into their budget work yet, but I am curious because now that our, we have a higher participation rate in Blue Cross, I'd be curious to see how that looks at their Blue Cross rate.
Right. And I mean, I know that, you know, as we go through, there's always that question that comes up, like, did we make the wise decision in sticking with West Suburban? Every year I feel like we did. And also I like to always check ourselves against like, you know, you know, other options. So that's an easy one. So thank you.
We've always had, we've always had a lower-cost provider in West Suburban than their Maya Blue Cross. But now I'm going to be curious to compare our two Blue Crosses.
Right, okay. Thank you so much. And, um, and I, like, then I'll stop. But financial literacy course, I like, really want to say thank you to all the people who've supported it, to all the kids who want to take it. I spoke into students who are in it and it's really powerful. And, you know, I read out on the Twitter, you know, people saying like in the 21st century, like, all kids need to be taking it. I'm really proud that, that we are on the front edge of that in terms of making that available to so many students. So thank you.
Well, it was, it was almost triple oversubscribed. So, and it's only a semester course. So by adding a little bit of this math, it's going to allow them to run it more than once. And then again, just highlighting for math too, you know, our, our level two math courses have been creeping up in their class sizes and those are our students that really need more math support. So that point six will also allow those classes to go back to the level that they were targeted to be in order to receive that, the, the one-on-one supervision and instruction that will make them, you know, excel in that, in that layer of curriculum. So I think that the ask at the high school for the educators are both of those are going to totally benefit the students. And I, if anything, the English is for to lower the class sizes in, in one of the upper level courses, but predominantly in the freshman level course. And I think we all know how critical that beginning of writing instruction is in the freshman year because it sets you up for the rest of your four years. And I will say, having talked to my friends and even my own, my own students, my own kids have gone through here, I think they're always commended at college of what good writers there are. And so I think it's because of our building base, that freshman year that really sets their path for how well they, you know, write in many different ways. But, uh, so I, you know, highly support that increase too and the English piece.
Thank you.
And if you're looking at this information and there's more, or you're looking at, say, any more information, just email Kate because we're happy to then bring that to you again on, on February 16th or even in March. So don't hesitate to ask. There's, there's no bad questions. They're all good questions.
Thank you.
So there's nothing, no action I need you to take on this tonight. The second piece is just looking at capital. So I just wanted to talk, walk through a couple of areas on capital and start laying some groundwork for where, where we may end up by the time you guys take all your final votes. So obviously, given our larger request for capital projects this year, we're, we're bringing, we're dusting off the IMA and bringing it back to life. And I don't even know how many of you were, have been on school committee when we took the IMA. We've lasted it in fiscal year 19. What an IMA does is allows the two towns to decide how they want to fund the capital assessment from the region. And so it allows them to either pay for free cash or borrow, but they need the IMA to be able to borrow if on the behalf of the region. So the other option is for the region to borrow themselves. So the IMA though allows the towns to make that decision on their own. Because, because sometimes in the past, expect, especially like in fiscal year 19, Dover wanted to cover their portion with free cash and not incur the borrowing and interest cost and Sherburne borrowed. So that is the beauty of the IMA for a region is it allows the member towns to decide the best way for them to fund the capital. So I just want to give a little preview of what the IMA was, and I included a draft for you that will pretty much mimic ours, except we've got to just put the dates in and the final amount that we're asking the towns to take over in the IMA. So if you look at our capital plan, we've got the two roof projects that in total, I gotta find my cheat sheet here. Total, oh, here we go, total a million 375,000. We actually are, we have an open bid on the market right now for this project because obviously if we want to get it done this summer, we have to have all the, the pieces of the puzzle put together. So the bid opening is Friday and I'm actually pretty excited. We, we had our walkthrough with interested contractors last Wednesday and actually had five different contracting firms here, plus our, our project manager is assuming there are some entities that will, will still bid and not have shown up to do the walkthrough. So we, I'm excited that we might see a fairly competitive bid on this project. You never know. So as of Friday, I, we're going to know what the number is. So that's why I've requested to have a more formal meeting of just the regional school committee prior to advisory and warrant so that I can have you approve that final number. It one allows us to start working with the two boards, the, the two select boards to have their, their bodies approve the IMA. And then it just keeps our capital moving along. But what I'd like to suggest is that we only put forth in the IMA, the cost of the roof project. The other smaller projects, we're still working on getting price quotes for and really firming up what, which direction we want to go. With everything that's listed outside the roof projects, you're looking at about $367,000. I'm going to recommend that we use E and D to cover those capital projects. That gives us one more flexibility in holding off approving that until we have firmer numbers. Then it also gives us the flexibility to start, actually start some of that work maybe earlier. And I'm thinking of the security system at Lincoln, potentially looking at what we're doing at the middle school for room dividing. So there's pros and, there's more pros to that to bring in on ourselves. We also, if you see your E and D certification, we're at the, we're at the top, right? Because we had to give back money. And so this allows us to get a little bit below, it'll take any surplus that we've created this year and then hopefully go a little bit below our 5% cap for next year. So that's another reason why I think we should move in that direction with those smaller projects. So I'm laying it out there for you to think about. Once we get the final bid number on Friday, then on the 16th, we'll bring that forward. We can formalize the IMA with whatever number the school committee is comfortable with and, and move that process along. Makes sense. Any questions on that? So it's almost a split year this year. The big project goes through the IMA and the smaller projects, as we typically have done, will go through the committee voting use of E and D.
Thank you for your detailed explanation as always. Any questions or comments? Thoughts for Dawn? Okay. Thank you so much, Dawn, for everything. That brings us to the review of the 2021 town report. And I realized as I was looking over this the other day, so I, I assume that I'm, I'm the one going over this. I'm happy to. But anyone, Maggie, especially since you did this last year, please feel free to jump in. So every year we're required to, E-school committee to give a report to the town. And it's really kind of a a high-level overview on different aspects of, of the region. And so I, I hope you got a chance to take a look at the draft. I know it was added a little bit later into our packet, but if anyone has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to entertain them. Maggie?
Just like a quick typo in enrollment, just putting an S on the end of students.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you. We catch? Anyone else have an edit or a, I mean, it's not, it's fairly straightforward. Do you have another comment, Maggie? Are you, you still? That's okay. Your, your, your raised hand blends into the wall color, so it's a little hard to see. Okay, and so we do need to vote on this, is that correct? And then it says draft, but we're voting on this. We don't need, this doesn't need a second read or anything. It's not a policy. Yeah. Okay. Any further thoughts or questions about the town report?
Thought it's, it looks great and thank you for taking the, taking the lead and drafting it for us.
Ah, thank you for reviewing it.
I have one more little one.
Yeah, please.
Like, just only because I know the lady in Dover likes it all, like, to go to her, like, all, all right. So you don't have, um, dense, you just have spaces. And then under finance, the last paragraph just is indented, but there's not an extra space. So just if you have it in electronic, just bring it out and like.
And I'm going to have wherever it says Dover, Sherburne in relation to like Dover, Sherburne Regional School District. We're starting to be more consistent in hyphenating Dover, Sherburne. So I'll have Cheryl add all of that. The hyphens in there too, yeah.
Yeah, I, I flat out told Cheryl that I was terrified to write this and, um, you know, she said, "Don't worry, it will help." But, and I was certainly not only me who wrote it, so. And I know Cheryl promised that she would fix all the, I know Maggie needs to be very specific in a special format and so.
I'm so sorry.
No, Cheryl, Cheryl's on it. Any other thoughts? Okay. Um, then I'd like to invite a motion to accept the 2021 town report with the noted edits. Maggie, Sharon, so moved.
Hold on a second.
Maggie and Lynn, thank you. Discussion? Nope. Okay. Maggie, Sharon.
Maggie, Sharon, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda, which is approving the minutes from the summer 7th and approving our donations. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Oh, yeah, and donations. I just had a question on the donations. I mean, it's clear where the, the Needham Bank is donating to the MEKO program, but Looters and the Patriots Foundation, I'm just curious about.
So Looters is because they just send us a contribution every year because of customers they serve in Dover and Sherburne. They give back to the schools and the towns where they have customers. And we typically give that to the science department to spend. The Patriots money is when Coach Ryan was named Coach of the Week. That's the donation from that, the Patriots organization. So that's being set aside for him to use for the football program.
Nice. Okay, okay, thank you. I was just curious. Um, and the MEKO money goes to, into the general MEKO fund.
It goes into the, right, the support, the MEKO support fund that's in our gift fund.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Oh, and actually you have that report in your packet, I forgot to mention, in your January 26 report. So you'll see the MEKO gift fund on there. You'll probably see the restriction for the $1,000 for the football in the detail behind that report.
Oh, great. I missed that part. Thank you. Okay, any further questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, then I would like to make a motion to approve, I'd like to invite a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the summer 7th and the donations.
Angie Johnson, so moved.
Angie, thank you.
Angie, so moved.
Thank you, Angie. Is there a second?
One second.
Lynn, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, Maggie?
Maggie, Sharon, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate Potter, yes. Very good. Thank you. We also have in your packet, the communications from our principals and the Dover School Committee minutes. I do always love, I know we don't always have time, but I do love reading the reports. So thank you for putting those together. And I often learn about my own children and what they're doing at the middle and high school because my boys don't always tell me. So thank you for putting those together. Our next meeting, as Dawn mentioned, is February 16th. And I think that's it for us tonight, unless I'm missing something. No. All right, then I, can we pull, can we just pull unanimously to adjourn or do we have to go through? All right, I'd like to pull to adjourn then. Looks like we're good. Thank you, everyone.